The Havertagh Grace Planning Commission meeting for May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four will now come to order. I will call the roll. Harry Miller.
Here.
Tammy Snegas.
Here.
Janice Chan.
Here.
Chip Leese.
Here.
Farah Hottshaw.
I'm here.
Ed Girono.
Here.
And Chair Volney Ford is present. Warren Hartenstein is not here. I'm going to ask our alternate, Harry Miller, to serve in his stead. Now, the question comes is what happens when he walks in? So, Harry, I guess you'll have to step back if that happens. Okay, the first case tonight, and actually the only case, is a site plan review for Wawa Incorporated and Ocean Petroleum Company Incorporated. Now, just a point of understanding, in your memorandum, you called it a site plan review. Are we expected tonight to vote on this as a final site plan?
It was previously tabled, so if the Planning Commission feels tonight that they've met the requirements and the reasons why it was tabled, then it should go forward for a vote.
Okay. Okay, since it was tabled, I think we have to have a motion to bring it up off the table.
I'll also move.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we're in business. So, there've been some modifications based on suggestions from this commission and based on a number of suggestions, recommendations, and input from various agencies since our last meeting. And so, Tim, I would like for you to bring us up to speed on that for public consumption.
Sure. The main thing we were waiting for last time is there were, the traffic analysis and the mitigation for the traffic analysis was being reviewed by State Highway Administration and the county, or we may have received comments back from them, but there were revisions that need to be made, and that caused a little bit of issues here because we also, or this group also recognized that there were potential traffic issues, and there were lots of ideas of potentially how to solve them, but, you know, nothing was put together concrete. There were some other issues that were mentioned. We had taken all that information, put that together in a letter, and sent it to the folks that are with us tonight. In the packet that was provided to you, they've provided their responses to everything, and they've also provided revised plans, looking at a lot of these traffic issues that were brought up. So, there are still some items that are remaining, but it's the department's take on it that these are things that likely can be taken care of as part of conditions, so spoiler alert, we are recommending approval of the plan with conditions. But just to go back a little bit, S H A and the county have reviewed the revised T I A, the Traffic Impact Analysis, and the mitigations that were provided by Wawa, and they have concurred with their solutions to the problems. When the county looked at a couple items, if you look at the memo on page one, it's the first bullet under Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Circulation, there were a couple items in there that the county had a different suggestion for, and I don't know that they had the opportunity to speak with S H A, or that S H A was fully able to vet out those solutions. So, there's a couple of things on the table that the applicant would need to resolve with those parties, so we just need to get everybody in the room and figure out what the best result is. The applicant tonight, and it was part of your package, they have a road improvements plan diagram, and they'll be able to go over all those different items with all of you. The one thing that we did notice as part of this, since they were able to get the sidewalks and the bike lanes in that were requested, pardon me, there's a little conflict as you come on the bike lane when you reach Lewis Lane, they're showing a crossing across Lewis Lane to, and then crossing forty on the north side of the intersection. It doesn't really work with bicycle circulation, because then bikes would be coming in the same direction, so we have requested that they add a pedestrian and bicycle crosswalk with safety areas in between, in case people have to stop in the median and that sort of thing. So, we've recommended that as part of our, we have that as part of our recommendations, but all of the other things seem to be mitigated, and State Highway and the county concur with those mitigations. There were a couple of things that were discussed by the Planning Commission that were requested, that we didn't see in the plans. We didn't see, there was a discussion about using the back area and opening up the open space and having an area for, as a public space with, or with bike rack or facilities. They did mention in their memo that they did open up that area, but no, we didn't see any bicycle facilities provided. I couldn't find the sidewalk that they had mentioned that connects the Rite Aid parcel to their parcel. Someone mentioned it was on one of the plans, but not on the site plan, so they can talk a little bit about that tonight. We didn't see any internal pedestrian crossings from the parking lot to get into the store. And then, our site plan ordinance, one fifty-five sixteen, we were discussing how all street-facing parts of the building have to have to have some sort of activation, so, or entrance features. They did add windows, but I don't think it quite meets what we were trying to get at or what the code was trying to get at. They have mentioned that they're willing to put some street art and some other things on there, so I think that's something that we can flesh out today with this group. And the only other item was, they have provided us with the state law that discusses the signage requirements for gas stations. On the department's first glance, we didn't see why they couldn't still meet our ten-foot sign requirements and still meet the state lighting requirements. It may be the case that they're not able to, and they would need a larger sign. Generally, when the state has a law that conflicts with local law, state law usually wins anyway, so that's something that we would have to work with them on a later date if they're not able to put in signage. Eric was able to go, he lives in Pennsylvania, and he has provided Wawa signage for a gas station at King of Prussia that we think more fits what we'd be looking at at this location, and also meets our sign requirements. So, it is in Pennsylvania, it's not in Maryland, but we know it does exist, so we just got to see if that meets the state law requirements. Otherwise, there were, we have all the recommendations at the bottom of this memorandum, those are pulled from this previous staff report, most of those things are items that we have for all development in staff report. There were some items that weren't previously, that weren't, that were part of the letter that have been addressed, we've taken those out, and then we've just added some other, the other items under, on page one, Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Circulation, and Architecture and Signage, and page two, those have been kind of weaved into the recommendations at the end, so. With that, I'll take any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Defer to the other commissioners. Explain the second bullet on the first page, based on the county's recommendation, the city will require a northbound right-hand turn lane. I'm a little confused about what you're talking about right there.
It's a southbound dedicated right-hand turn lane, so my understanding of this is that as you're coming down forty, if you're coming southbound on forty before you reach Lewis Lane, there'd be a dedicated right-hand turn lane to turn onto Lewis Lane, but that...
But that's not on this property, that's on Y's property, right?
None of, a lot of the, the Wawa will, according to the Traffic Impact Analysis, will create mitigation requirements off of the property, so you're correct, it's not on the property, but that doesn't prevent S H A requiring certain things.
But there's an excuse, let them off the hook, right?
Yeah, well, and some of the mitigation that they'll have to do is even down at the next intersection to the north at Ohio Street, which is another signalized intersection away, but, you know, they affect the level of service there, so they're required to perform that mitigation. I'm just not sure with the timing of go car wash, I know they were kind of ready to go, and they were sort of waiting to see how all this worked out, but, I mean, if this is on their property and they'll put something in, I think it makes probably more sense that it goes along with their application, but that's something that we would have to discuss with the county.
Now, Route forty is southbound heading towards Aberdeen?
Yep.
And northbound heading towards the bridge?
Yes.
But says here, based on the county's recommendation, the city will require a northbound right-hand turn lane from the Harbor Shops access, and I'm trying to picture that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the second bullet under the first bullet. The county recommends the city require a northbound right-hand turn lane from the Harbor Shops access, so...
Is there a mistake in there?
Yeah. No, I mean, if you look at a, she'll have it here, yeah, if you look at a compass, it probably is north, that was taken from the county's review, I guess it's probably actually east?
I mean, what we refer to as...
Yeah, it's that back one, back one turning right onto Lewis Lane, thank you.
All right. Point out Lewis Lane.
Lewis Lane's here.
Okay.
From the Harbor Shop access, which is, this is the access that comes to Harbor Shop, so they're saying a dedicated right turn lane.
Okay, that, got it, got it.
So, that would be eastbound?
It's a north, well, the access road goes parallel to forty, so it goes north-south, so it's a northbound turning east on Lewis Lane.
Route forty turns slightly south of east as you get up into Cecil County.
Right.
So, it's really confusing, anyway. Thank you, and the second question, so we don't take too much time on this. And you're talking about the sign requirements, and you were saying that on the second page, if there's a conflict between city ordinance that you just talked about and the state and the state requirements, you, of course, will defer to the state, but usually, which ones, the one that's more restrictive is the one you have to go with? In other words, if the county, if the state is very lax about a particular thing and the city is pretty adamant about it, then the city would outweigh the state, would it not?
In that hypothetical, yes, but the situation with signage is that they require gas stations have a certain brightness, the numbers have to be a certain size, if they show a fractional number, that little nine that you'll see at the end of the gas prices, there are certain things that are required to be able to see the size of that, so...
So, they're looking for something a little bit bigger?
They're looking to provide visibility, right?
Okay.
And so, there's sort of, their standards are minimal requirements.
I was just trying to figure out which entity was pulling and which direction.
Mm-hmm, yep, they have minimal requirements for gas station signage.
Right, right. And your last statement, number seven, on the third page, right up the top of the page, and you're talking about the two-year extensions for site plan.
Yes.
And it, I understand what we've been doing all these years, but it seems like the way this is written, if they're not substantially, let's say they are substantially underway, and they realize they're not going to be able to complete it in the one-year period, what then? Because you're saying we're not supposed to grant an extension?
I mean, this is pulled directly from section one fifty-five twenty-five, so under our site plan code, I mean, this is just how it reads.
It's a little, reads a little weird.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, this is really just, it's supposed to be a cut and paste of section one fifty-five twenty-five, I mean, I can...
It would seem to me that no matter what state the project's in, whether it's never started or whether it's halfway finished, they should have a right to apply for an extension.
Well, if they substantially start construction, then they wouldn't need an extension.
Hopefully.
Yeah, that, well, no, it wouldn't, they would be vested, so this would go away. This would be in the case that they didn't vest the project.
But if they start, if they start construction in the...
If they start construction, it's vested.
In the third quarter of that year, and they've only got one quarter left to build a darn thing.
No, no, as soon as you start construction, you're vested.
I think it has to do with, they'll have the permits.
Huh?
They'll pull the permits and start working.
Right.
It's literally substantial construction, it's the starting of substantial construction.
Make sure we don't get them caught in a trap, that's all.
No, 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 so if they start, if they start work and they begin substantial construction, and it takes them ten years to complete the project, they never have to ask for an extension, according to our law, so...
Other commissioners? Yes, Harry?
Sorry, I wanted to talk about this one real quick, actually, two quick things. It's a question for you, Tim. So, one of the things that we talked about last time, that I talked about, is that currently on Lewis Lane, there's a left-hand, a left-hand and straight, and a right-hand turn, and it's my opinion that they're creating a need for a left-hand turn lane, and I know that that's what was presented to state highways and to the county, and of course, they're okay with it, it makes sense, but my question is, does it make sense to you and the people that actually use that road, not the customers of Wawa? And was that brought up anymore? And I can elaborate more, I mean, as a person who uses that like ten thousand times, I'm not turning left, I'm going straight or I'm turning right?
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I would say is that, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, so when they put these, I mean, what you're discussing is real-world experience, I think you find this all the time in engineering and the sciences, so you're speaking of your real-world experience. You know, they have licensed traffic engineers who put together the study, they do counts, they follow the methods and procedures of traffic engineering, they have trip distribution saying where people are going to turn and where they're going to go, and based on that, there's a set of standards, whether, you know, A through F, whether you're going to fail or not fail, and then there's a set of mitigation techniques that can be put into place, so if I read that document and tried to do something with that on my own, I mean, I would, it wouldn't be very good, so we pass it off to state, well, State Highway requires that it be looked at for highways for the state, but then we have the county also look at what State Highway had to say and what our concerns were, and they concur with the mitigation techniques that their traffic engineers put in. I'm not sure, you know, from an engineering standpoint, why this works better than some of the suggestions that we had here, but...
So, I guess, I'll just say it again, that I understand the traffic study, I understand what they said, I understand that works for Wawa in this situation. We're told that there's over four thousand trips on Lewis Lane, I couldn't get to, if that's exactly in front of the high school, and how many of those four thousand originate on the other side of the street, but I think it's a great deal of them coming down from Grace Harbor, Bayview, Bully Rock, okay? And I was just wondering if that was looked at when we were talking about the parameters of the T I A, because, again, this will work for Wawa, and there's not a problem with this and Wawa. I was worried about the residents of Havertagh Grace.
Right, well, that's, I guess what I'm saying is that we had the state and the county look at it on behalf of the city, so while it's Wawa who presents it, I mean, I believe the state and the county are looking out for our best interests, I think they take into consideration all of those items, I think, I think this, I'm not sure if this works best for Wawa or not, I think probably what worked best for Wawa was what they presented last time.
Which was this, the left-hand turn, and it's, I think, with the straight and the right.
Yeah, I don't think you can, I don't think you can look at any of the, I can't, this is like a system of traffic, I don't know that you can look at any of these one things separate from all the other mitigation.
Since the last meeting, I've gone out of my way to have my lunches at the Burger King across the street as much as I can, as much as I try to stay away from fast food, so I can just sit there and watch what happens. And it can be anytime between ten o'clock in the morning and two o'clock in the afternoon, and what I've noticed, and what I've noticed, I knew all along, but I've seen it with my own eyes, is that there's hardly any right turn on red going on there, there's very little, and if it stacks, I mean, it's just, it's just not enough cars making that right turn, and they can easily just come straight out of Wawa and make the right turn, they don't have to go around the back door and come out that way. Now, what I do notice is that there's a tremendous amount of stacking in the straight-ahead and left-turn, and that's the problem we have today, and that's the way this is laid out, the same thing will happen. What I would strongly advocate, and I think this is what you're talking about, is that people that are trying to make a right turn there can just wait for the light, because it'll be, if there's a car in front of them, because we don't have very much stack space up that street, and particularly after a train rolls through.
Yeah, I think...
And the thing is...
I think the improvement adds a hundred and fifty feet of stacking with a hundred-foot taper, is that right? This adds stacking in that left-hand turn lane?
But we need room enough, it's a long light, we need enough room to stack the straight-ahead traffic, which is a lot of.
So, Volney, we're saying a similar thing.
I know.
But my contention is, is there isn't enough room to stack in the left and straight lane, and that's because of people going straight, not generally because of people coming left. If you're coming down the hill, you're not coming from Bully Rock down there to make a left onto forty.
So, my point is to have two lanes, one left turn all by itself, and one straight-ahead all by itself, and in the straight-ahead lane, they can make a right turn if it's available.
And that's what they want, and if that's the consensus of the group, I'm okay with it, I'm just asking the question. I mean, just as a person that has sat there a zillion times, okay?
Yeah.
That's it, all right, so we can let it lie.
Yeah, I think, you know, before there's any of this analysis and any mitigation that has to be required, the first thing you do with any of this stuff is traffic counts and trip distribution. They are out there counting the number of people that go across this area and in which direction that they're going, so the solutions that are made are based on where people are actually moving. So, I mean, it might just be possible that you have a different experience, or the experience that you have doesn't cause, that part of that experience doesn't fail.
It's only twenty-one years of it, but it's okay, I mean, I'm okay with it.
You're in the wrong field then, you go traffic engineer is next for you.
No, I couldn't be that, sorry.
Anything else? Harry?
And then, one other thing, just, we talked about the signs all the time, you know, and this, this commission denied the urgent care sign, and they wanted visibility too. I realize there's no state law involved there with size of their sign, but just right adjacent to them, we just recently said no.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, Tim, I have some, a couple of questions. There's, going back to that second point, the second bullet of the first bullet, where it talks about requesting a southbound dedicated right turn lane, but that would be onto Lewis Lane or into Wawa directly? Because I also see this proposed shoulder restriping, which would create a, using the shoulder as a right in and right out to Wawa.
That's a good question, I guess I would need to clarify that with the county, I'm not sure if the Bowler folks, do you know if that was on your side to get into your ingress egress? If you, just, if you mind coming up to the microphone, just state your name, state your name and who you're with, if you don't mind.
Jen Bass with Bowler. From the state, and it was requested for the access into Wawa, continued down to the access into Rite Aid. I believe, and Alex, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the county has requested that be extended, so it would be to the far side of the intersection, that would then be in front of the property that's on the far side of Lewis Lane. So, it would be before the intersection, and that would be able to be, it would be for a turn for any development at this property, but then also would allow for that right turn onto Lewis Lane.
But you're also proposing right in and right out directly into Wawa?
Yes, that was a state request.
Where do we have that on Route forty right now? Because I can't picture anywhere where there's, where that shoulder is used as right in and right out.
There is, further south, there is an area, Alex, do you know exactly where it is?
The Burger King across the street's right in, right out.
There's nothing in front of the adjacent property, I can tell you that, the Rite Aid or the Harbor Shops further down. It's past the Harbor Shops, past the vacant area that's further south is where the first area where there is a striping that allows for that right in, right out.
Yeah, because I know, like, going into Wase, there's... Yeah, because I know like going into Wais, there's no right in.
Yes, there's nothing north.
No. And the reason I bring it up is, one, because that's also identified as a bike route along the shoulder there. And then the Baltimore Metropolitan Council has proposed dedicated pedestrian and bike lane, not exactly clear where exactly and how that affects the shoulder, but that is a proposed bike route.
Yes, and S H A does have a project that proposes bike, a bike route along Route 40.
Right.
And for this stretch of Route 40, the width that's there with the shoulder and the right-of-way available behind the curb, they, S H A was not requiring any widening of the road to accommodate that. So not speaking for S H A, but my understanding, again, Alex, please feel free to hop in, is that if, when that project were to go forward, there would be modifications to the, the shoulder area and this right in, right out in front of the Wawa.
Okay, so it would...
Alex Meisler with Traffic Planning and Design. The striping at such point that that S H A project would come through, the striping in front of this property as well as the whole stretch would be modified in order to indicate a continuous bike lane. The dashed, this dashed, is, it helps as a visual cue, people coming through the intersection to kind of guide them into a, that beyond the intersection to guide them in and out of the driveway and also, again, an awareness that there is a driveway there. But it's paint on the highway. So again, if, if S H A does come through and puts in a continuous bike lane, it can be adjusted accordingly and still, still meet the intent of their comment for this project as well as putting in the bike lane in the future.
Within the, within the shoulder itself, it can accommodate both, the right in and right out plus the bike lane? Or would, would it start going behind the curb?
It would, where the bike lane would go?
Where...
I can't speak for where the bike lane is going to go. I mean, they could build, they could extend, you know, they, they could extend the shared use path and have it behind the curb, which really from, I'm a cyclist, I'd rather have it up there off the curb and not in the shoulder, to be quite honest. But, you know, if, again, if there's room to reasonably, to reasonably extend that further south.
And the, the right-of-way line is actually here. And so there is the shoulder now, and there is a significant amount of property that right now would just be grassed area between the curb and the property line for that S H A project.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we weren't precluding an important improvement through there.
Fortunately, it's just, I don't want to say it's just paint, but it is just paint, you know? It's not concrete and pipe and stormwater drains and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, so this red here for this pork chop is, as Alex said, would be paint.
Paint.
There is, there is an actual concrete pork chop that would have the pedestrian access through it, but in regards to the red, that would be paint.
Okay. And Chip, just, just so you know, I'm looking at the, the S H A response, and it does say for all roadway sidewalk improvements to S H A roadways, provide and maintain bicycle facilities as well as full ADA compliant, blah, 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 to continue coordinating with their design person, Jared Paper Evers. There's another one a little bit further down about working with Aaron Kuhn on this. So their designs and final, everything will have to go back to S H A and they've already recognized all these, all these issues. Just so, just so you know, this isn't like, if this is approved today in this format, I mean, in this way, it'll, it'll probably have to be reconfigured or tweaked in some way that it meets the state requirements. They've already recognized it.
Sir, sir, for your benefit, we have called and spoken, you know, reached out to both of the gentlemen referenced. All the information that they have, we have incorporated.
Okay.
It's as up to date as the information that we've been provided.
Okay, very good. I do, I appreciate the addition of the multipurpose lane along Lewis Lane. I think that's going to be a huge benefit. But I do agree with the planning department's recommendation that you're not leaving people in a good place to cross Route 40. And I think you need to reconfigure that. So you have both a safer pedestrian and more direct bike route across Route 40 there. The sidewalk along Route 40, and by the way, I was just driving by there the other, yesterday, and I saw a woman and her young child going from the BP across Lewis Lane and then heading up. So putting the sidewalk along Route 40 is very important too. Does it extend past the pork chop or does it stop before the driveway there?
It, it does extend. So there's a landing spot in the pork chop and then it extends to the property line.
Okay. All right, very good. If I could switch to signage real quick, is the incompatibility, potential incompatibility with state law, is it a matter of the area of the sign? Or does the state law, is your interpretation that the state law requires it be higher than the city would require it?
So it's ultimately in regard to area, square footage, and making sure that all of the requirements are met for the sizing of the numbering and the lettering for, for those pricing panels.
Okay.
And I, I think from a signage standpoint, I understand that, you know, from a variance aspect, that would go in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Not sure, I know you mentioned the, I think, patient burst? Is that what?
Urgent care.
Urgent care. Some quick care facility that you, that you had weighed in from a signage perspective. And so the intent of Wawa and understanding that, you know, the proposed signage, freestanding signage at this point does not meet code requirement, taking into account, making sure that pricing is also available, the intent was to file for a signed variance. Again, knowing that that's separate from this process and from, you know, who has the approvals there. And so if it's something that we could, you know, take the freestanding sign off of the site plan for the time being to get planning commission approval for the site plan and work through signage, you know, kind of concurrently with the site plan and whatever the final freestanding sign, you know, ends up being based on going through a signage variance process. And if that's denied, we would work, you know, with Wawa to determine what signage works best to meet state and Wawa requirements.
Well, if, so if you needed a variance from the city ordinance to achieve the area requirements, the size of the letters, you would not need to increase the height of the sign beyond the city requirements?
So the city requirement is a 10-foot max for the sign. And so, yes, we could look at what could be configured, as Tim said, Eric did, provide images of a Wawa freestanding sign in...
King of Prussia?
King of Prussia, yes, correct.
Okay.
So that is something that Wawa is open to looking at those different options. The preference from Wawa would be to apply for the variance and, you know, to, to make the case for the variance and proceed from there.
Right. But the variance should be as narrowly framed as possible.
Yes.
So that would be maintaining the height limitations within the ordinance and perhaps increasing the area of the sign if that was required to meet the state requirement.
Understood.
All righty. I did want to talk about the facade facing Lewis Lane unless, should we go ahead and proceed with that?
Well, yeah, go ahead.
All right. Yeah, having, you know, I understand you guys were, by the way, welcome back. Let me just say that. And let me also, let me also say, just as a preface, that I grew up in Princeton, New Jersey. And so Wawa has been in the Princeton area for at least 40 years. So I'm a big fan of Wawa and people who know Wawa are big fans. But going back to the facade facing Lewis Lane, it is, it is a requirement of the code and there's a reason for that. You know, if you have, you don't want to put the side of a building against a street. And I think Lewis Lane will be very actively used by folks accessing the Wawa. You know, the kids walk back and forth from school along there all the time. People will walk down the hill to go to Wawa, just like they walk down Chapel Road to get to the Royal Farm over there. So now you've made certainly better accommodations in terms of the bike lane and access that way. But that facade, even if it's not an entrance per se, I know it looks like you have a service entrance on that side, but it should be attractive and it should be welcoming. And, you know, faux windows, you know, as Tim suggested, don't, don't quite get you there. You have 12 feet of sidewalk along there, 12 week of, 12 feet of paving that really does nothing for the site plan. People aren't going to even walk along there, I would anticipate, to get from one end to the other. So you have an opportunity to do, do things there. And I sent the planning department just a picture from Chick-fil-A just off of 95 at 9:24. They have, you know, it's their standard model, but they have sidewalk cafe, you know, tables with umbrellas out there, which could be, you know, create more of a cafe kind of appearance out there. You could do vegetative walls, you could do, you know, a number of things there. And I, I saw you expressed openness to that. And so I would really suggest you work a little bit harder on that. Because I think it would just, it would benefit you and it would benefit the city to have that approach much more attractive.
Yes, and as you mentioned, there is the service door on that side. So putting cafe tables, you know, could conflict with making sure that we have access to the door and making sure that we have car access through there as well, you know, for any, anything that needs to get, any deliveries that may need to get to that side door. But as you said, we did have two options that we sent back, one with faux windows, one with murals. But Wawa is open to working with, you know, Tim and his team, planning commission, to come up with a scheme for that side of the building that is agreeable to everyone.
Well, I would suggest that as a condition going forward. I think it's mentioned in Tim's, but that any approval would be based on improvements to, to that facade. And technically, they might need to go to the Board of Appeals for that too, unless they made that an entrance, I suppose.
Yeah, I'd have to read the, I'd have to read the exact, I'd have to read the exact wording on that, but potentially.
Yeah. Well, hopefully we can guide them in the right direction.
If we vote on this tonight and we refer to conditions, which was our normal practice, I think you should be, between now and then, be framing the language.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's kind of, we can't just...
Yep.
Set a vague condition.
Right.
Either you or Tim should be prepared to, to read it so that we can, whoever, whoever moves can incorporate that. Anything else, Chip?
No, I think that does it.
All right. Next person, anybody? Yeah?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Excuse, forgive me if I sound ignorant, but doesn't Wawa have, like, everywhere you go, it's a standard signage, right? Wawa has a standard sign wherever you may go. So it should really be a non-issue, right? I mean, that's the size you have for a, let's say, a BP gas station, a Wawa gas station. I mean, they're standards.
Generally, yes. There are standard signage packages for the Wawa, the building signage, the, the freestanding signage. Wawa does have ability, you know, obviously, different jurisdictions have different code requirements. And some jurisdictions, you know, allow a sign 30 feet tall. So the sign, you know, typically would be the 20-foot tall, but if someone's allowing a 30-foot tall sign, there are accommodations, you know, that Wawa would make to, to be able to meet that larger sign size if, if it was warranted at the site. But yes, there is typical Wawa signage that is...
That is allowed.
Correct.
Okay, so to, to me, that should be a non-issue. I mean, it's a standard that, I mean, every gas station uses, right?
Correct.
So at least in my mind, that shouldn't be an issue. And the other question I had for you was, and again, forgive my vocabulary, when you did, would you, when you do that traffic study, do you do, I mean, in our, in my language, they're called use cases, do you do scenarios? You know, like, what if this side does this to this traffics or the right to the left? You know, you know what I'm saying?
Sure.
Some, some scenario building, so you actually have an idea of who's going to kill who's, or who's going to run into whom, you know?
Yes, and I'll let Alex speak to that.
When, excuse me, that is if Alex can speak, I apologize. When we scope the traffic studies with the state and the county, we look at existing conditions, a no-build condition, and then obviously our build condition. And in a, as part of the no-build condition, it can either be a combination of, and I'm speaking, you know, generally, it could be, you know, the county, the state, whoever. If there are known developments in the area, we are, that are already on the books and are approved, we have to account for their traffic in there. In addition, we are also given a background growth factor. Now, it's, it, from a planning standpoint, you know, based on historical, you know, historical growth over the last few years, how built out is a certain area? You know, is there a lot of undeveloped land? Is it really a, pretty much a fully built-out area? You know, even if you redevelop a site, are you trading one, one guy's traffic for another? Like, you know, is it kind of net growth? So there is, in the no-build condition, that is where those items, where, where those different factors are looked at. In this case, we were given a growth factor from the county as well as other committed developments. We also, as part of our, included in our analysis was, assuming, I really apologize, my allergies have been getting me the last few days. We accounted for what we, we understand is going to be a car wash here, so that is, that is also factored in to our analysis at the, at this point in time. So that's the long answer to your short question of, yes, we, to, to the greatest extent possible, try to factor in what else is going on around.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for educating me because I, I just have a hard time picturing, you know...
That's, that's fair.
But thank you.
While I have the microphone, if it's okay with the...
Yes, sir.
...planning commission. I believe, sir, you were asking about the through in the left turn lane. Since I have the mic, may I, may I attempt to address that? Sorry. So as, as you, in, in existing conditions, the through left, this on, call it the eastbound Lewis Lane approach, the through and left turn lane movement are shared and the right turn lane is, is its own lane. Based on our traffic counts, the predominance of traffic wants to either go through or go left. So that right turn lane is very underutilized. By having a dedicated left turn lane and the through right, as you mentioned, sir, there's very few people who are going to be handicapped by maybe having to sit behind someone and not be able to make a right turn on red. The other benefit, and this would be true if everything stayed the same, by making these lane switches, currently, if you've driven through the intersection, you know that Route 40 goes, but then each, each approach of Lewis Lane has its own cycle. Call that a split-phase cycle. Allowing the left turn movements from, by making these lane changes, lane use changes, will allow the left turn lanes to go simultaneously, the through movements to go simultaneously, thereby increasing the efficiency of the intersection. So again, really from an operation standpoint, whether this project existed or not, that would be an operational improvement here. The other thing to consider in making that change is that US 40 is a coordinated signal system. system. By allowing your side movements to operate more officially, officially, efficiently, it gives you more operational flexibility for US 40 to maintain free, you know, to maintain better operations on the main line as well.
So, you know, just conversation here, then. I do think that anything done there is an improvement. One of the things that gets overlooked is that the straight and left-hand turn lane is such a short stacking area that, you know, and don't want to block Wawa and everything else like it. So it impedes right-hand turns also, because they're stacked up and people can't go down there and make right-hand turns anyhow. And I'm glad to see that there's some improvements on Ohio, because the deal is, is, I think, I think, it's opinion, that there's so many trips on Lewis Lane is because Ontario Street and that intersection down there, and trying to get out to 40 that way to turn, is probably the worst intersection in all of Havertagh Grace, okay? And there's a lot of problems, and there's been a lot of accidents there, and the cones they keep putting up are getting run over again, like, they have to replace those all the time. So, we're still going to have a little bit of a difference of opinion, but I do agree that what you're doing there will work for Wawa, and anything done there will help the current situation by making that stacking longer.
Well, it not only makes the stacking longer, but you're actually, really, I can't say you're doubling it, but you are definitely increasing it, because you're separating out, right now, your through traffic and your left turn traffic are all queued together. Now you're, and I'm making up numbers here, but say you have 100 feet of cars that want to turn left, and you have 100 feet that want to turn through, you have a 200-foot queue because they're both in the same lane. If you separate those out, now you have, you've compressed that, or you've shortened that overall length of potential queue, because you've separated those two streams into two separate lanes.
So, I guess, and I'm sorry, we're belaboring this, and I don't mean to bog it down, but what I would say is, is that, and I think I said it last time, the people that are coming down from Havertagh Hills and Bayview and Grace Harbor and Bully Rock, they're not coming down there to go to Cecil County. Okay, the people that are going to Cecil County and turning left are the people that are going home, avoiding the 95 Bridge, and stopping at your Wawa, which is a great location for it, okay? So, that's my contention, and we don't need to talk about, I don't want to talk about anymore. I said my piece, and again, I agree with what you're doing there, improves things somewhat, but, you know, not necessarily for the people from Bully Rock or, you know, Grace Harbor. That's just my opinion.
All right, ladies, anything?
I have several things, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I just want to review, because they're already on here, but I just want to see what the response is. On page one of our memo, it says, "Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Circulation," there's a bullet that says, "No bicycle facilities," or "Bike Rack or Public Spaces." I know that we sort of addressed that, but I was wondering what your response is to that.
Sure. So, so one of, you know, part of the intent was to provide bicycle racks. They're not shown now, because it was something that was still kind of being discussed as to placement. From the initial comments, it seemed as if where they were being requested was in, at the kind of rear of the site, along that back access that's coming through to the harbor shops. And so, it's a non-issue to provide bike racks, it's more of the placement and, you know, that final determination.
That was one question that is really simple, that, and these are all simple, I think, for you. The next one is, "The department could not locate the sidewalk connecting Wawa to the adjacent site." Has that been addressed on your perspective?
Yes.
So that's completely answered.
So, there is sidewalk along this back access drive that comes across to here as well, and then, obviously, we have sidewalk on the frontage. So there is
That's fine. The next one is, "The internal pedestrian crossings from parking areas and the gas pumps that are not shown on the plan, has that been addressed as well?"
So, yes, so there is ADA access from the pumps to the store, and then also from the parking to the store. We typically don't stripe that. You know, we would ultimately have a lot of striped area shown, but yes, that is taken into account, and there is access.
Okay. The next one is the pedestrian refuge, I think that's on the 40, I believe.
Yes, and, yes, there is a landing in the pork chop.
Okay, and that's all disability, where they
Yes, yes, that'll be a requirement from S.H.A. in their review. It will need to be compliant.
All right, my next question is the last one, on our next page three of our memorandum from Tim. It says, "The water and sewer services for the Rite Aid must be located within a private utility easement and recorded." Has that already been done?
It has not been recorded, but yes, it is shown in an easement on our plan. Don't want to record that at this point until we make sure that the locations remain as intended with current design, but yes, it will be, it will be addressed with the final improvement plans.
My last one thing I want to say is, I'm really appreciative of your concept of the traffic going straight through down Lewis Lane, because as Volney said, the traffic going in that direction is the main thing, people going straight into town, and that is the backup. I drive it all the time, and I know that that's an issue. So, there is such a little thing, so little, that you can do to resolve this, because it's such a small piece of road. I think that sounds like a really good solution, I just want to let you know that.
Thank you. Yes, we are hopeful that it will address and alleviate some of the existing issues there.
And that's it, that's all my stuff.
Councilwoman Snegas, have you got anything?
Hello? Thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you for being patient with us and for taking time to consider our recommendations and everything.
Sure.
My only concern is, is that, I know that they addressed the facade area. I think with kids walking through and people having that common area, is there going to be parking on that side, or is that off further over?
So there is, from the Lewis Lane side, there is no parking on this side.
Okay, so, that will be an area that can be considered for possible. I know that people will want to stand around, maybe enjoy some of their goods that they purchase. Will there be any form of a place to, you know, fill up your tires, et cetera? Will that be in that space, or is there going to be another area for that?
So they're back here in this corner.
Okay, so essentially, that will, could be considered an area for people to have a space to loiter, and/or, as Mr. Place mentioned, a place to maybe have a picnic area or something like that.
So, in this area, you know, I guess people could technically stand in that area if they wanted to. One of the things that, it was an initial request from the commission after our first visit, was in regard to trying to provide open space in addition to the bicycle racks. And so, what we did in this rear area, we obviously widened this drive aisle, which took some of the green space, but we moved all of the landscape in order to remain and to meet the landscape requirements of the code. We had to keep all of this landscape, but we moved it as close as we could this way to the parking, and left some green space here that also is, you know, available, it's along the walk to the harbor shops, with the intent that it, you know, would be available, open, grass area.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, you guys have done a really good job with accommodating, you know, the ADA, the landscaping, and, you know, the different possibilities of, you know, having the structure so that it is amenable to our service vehicles that come in, et cetera. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm glad that you're back here again for representation for Wawa Corporation.
Thank you.
Okay, so, unless I missed something, it seems that the traffic consultants for Wawa and the traffic consultants for the city kind of agreed that this is the best plan.
There's, there's a couple conflicting items, but they concur generally with the provisions provided. I would, I, yes, I agree with what you say. There's just, there was a couple conflicts between what the county had recommended and what the state recommended.
Minor things.
But it, there are things that would be ironed out between the three. I mean, at the end of the day, S.H.A.'s requirements for their roadways would stand. If they agreed with the county that theirs would be better, then I think that they would switch to the county, but this, yeah, I think everything's
My thought, or just so everybody understands, I feel like the people who do this all day, every day, are the ones who should know, okay? That if those two things are mostly in agreement, that, you know, what we individually have experienced, or whatever, I think that those people should be given more credit than, you know, otherwise. So, I just wanted to point that out, that those are the professionals, and we should lean towards what they recommend, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
So, that's all I had to say. Is anyone else from your team that wants to add anything, or, I don't know how much of your team is here, but
I think we are, we are good aside
Resting your case.
Semi
Unless we have another question, because I haven't gone to the public yet.
So we, there is one question, and it's regarding to, Tim, something you had mentioned in your opening, and specifically in regards to the pedestrian refuge across Route 40.
Yeah, my, I was saying on the, coming from your property across, so like, so as of now, somebody riding a bike would come down Lewis and come to the corner, and then have to turn north and cross Lewis Street, and then cross 40 there. But then bikes coming the other direction would be in conflict, because the path's only so big.
Right, and one, happy to have the conversations there, one thing that is of concern is that there's no, you know, landing for them on the other side of Route 40, which would then, you know, we would get them across Route 40, and then they would be, there'd be no place to go. So, happy to have continued conversations about that, and to discuss with S.H.A. as well, from a safety perspective.
Maybe there's funds available, if you're doing all this stuff, maybe they can pitch in for that other piece. There's also a harbor freight that's coming in that building there. They don't have to go through this entire process, because they're taking over another old retail spot, but it may be possible that that's something that they would be willing to add in as well.
Yes, yeah, so we would have to take a look at more over here for whomever was going to
Understand.
Provide that landing area, but just wanted to point that out, to make sure it wasn't a strict condition of approval.
Um, yeah, I understand.
I just wanted to point out, and I want to say, I, you know, I'm a cyclist. I agree with the intent of the comment. I just wanted to make sure that we added some clarity as far as the execute, the potential execution of that. It's not as easy as just striping. It, again, there's a great drop-off, there's no connection. It also then gets into the pad landing, gets into the turn sweep in the median, which would have to be checked. Then the stop bar has to come back. It could have potential, you know, have to check the distance to
There's a I understand.
It's just not putting a stripe
You can't just stripe it and call it a day.
We just can't stripe it and call it a day. It's, I don't, we certainly understand the intent, but as far as the execution of it, there's a lot, that, and I also have no idea how much right, you know, there, how much spacer right-of-way is there available to.
I got you.
So I just wanted to add some, some
Preface that on approval from S.H.A., since it's in their roadway anyway, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, if you all just would stand by, I'm going to go to the public. Is anyone here from the public that would, has a question, or would like to address the commission? Just raise your hand if, yes, ma'am, if you would step up to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
My name's Jen Zimer, 124 Grace Manor Drive. Traffic. I could go on for days. I like the idea of the lane changing, not the signal changing. I don't know, if I remember it correctly, Lewis Lane used to cross 40 at the same time, and it was changed for a reason, because there were too many accidents. That's why we have one side go and then the other now. That was before the high school moved, that was before more neighborhoods were built, that's before the ones you're already approving that haven't even started yet. Traffic's just going to continue to grow and grow. It all filters through my neighborhood and down my street. The 4,000 crossings a day, 90% of it comes through my neighborhood, if not all of it. I've seen the numbers, I've seen the Speed Spy report, I've seen, I've got a copy of the report that was done in 2019, again, that was before the school moved. I love Wawa. I wish to God you guys would go up on the corner by 95 instead of where you want to go right now. Um, a lot of people love Wawa. They're diehard, you know, it's like Coke and Pepsi fans, there's Wawa and Rofo. People who like Royal Farm or go there now, go there because there isn't a Wawa. When that changes, the few people that are holds-out and not cutting through my neighborhood are going to come through my neighborhood now. We don't get 95 traffic right now. I think we will get it if their destination is to go to Wawa. Just, it's not going to get better, it's going to get worse. Um, I don't know, I know it's one small neighborhood, but we've been, we've been, I don't know, I'm trying to think of the right word, I get nervous when I get up here, so I can't talk very well. We've been smushed, because of CSX, because of the configuration of other neighborhoods, because other developers didn't do things the way they were supposed to initially, and didn't make through roads that they were supposed to make, we're the only one. And you keep adding more neighborhoods on the hill, and they're going to keep coming through ours. And it just, we need a break. I don't know, there's nowhere else to send it, which is a problem. And I don't know how to get around that, I've thrown plenty of suggestions out, but I always come back with, you know, well, it's a state road, well, that's a private road, well, that's a, we can't make them do that.
You're talking about the traffic that's coming through Havertagh Hills, is that right?
Havertagh Hills, Grace Manor, yes.
I mean, Havertagh Hills is kind of the throat of the traffic.
It is, it is, it's awful. But it's, it's, it's all just gonna, and it all filters to that intersection, and we all think that intersection's bad now. I kind of disagree with the lack of right turns. I think it is much greater in the morning when people are leaving for work than it is any other time during the day, especially when you're at lunchtime. I think it looks less than it is, because as soon as the cars queue up, they cut through the BP. I think a lot of people turn and they go to Duncan first. Duncan might not be their preference once Wawa's there. Also, if you have both sides of Lewis Lane going at the same time, as it shortens the amount of time for 40 to be stopped, that also shortens the amount of time for people crossing on foot, because not everybody presses the button and actually waits for the pedestrian crossing to say it's okay to cross. And right now, they take advantage of the fact that Lewis Lane it's okay to cross. And right now, they take advantage of the fact that Lewis Lane goes separately, and so they can get halfway across 40, wait a few minutes, and then get the other half. And there's a lot of middle school and high sc-, high school kids crossing. I mean, it's not just adults. There are a lot of kids, little kids, crossing by themselves because they choose to walk to school. Um, I don't know.
Okay.
Sorry. But it just, somehow, some way, it needs to be fixed.
We hear your concerns.
To be, it just, it's a big concern, and I just only see it getting worse. And traffic just continuing to increase. And, you know, people think we're exaggerating. We easily, easily get between 3,500 and 4,000 cars down our street every single day.
Do you have a recommendation to the commission?
Not regarding Wawa, no. Um, I, I, you've gotta find another way out to 40 besides our neighborhood. I think people need to fight harder to get CSX to the table to allow another crossing. I think the developer in Bully Rock should be forced to break a road through, even if it's only for Bully Rock, even if it's still just for the gated community. Put another gate at the other end. There's a thousand homes, just in that community alone, that come down through us. If they had their own way out to 40, that would lessen our traffic. They got all that money. Put up another private gate, the emergency entrance that you're talking about now for the, I don't remember the name of the street, but for the newest little strip in there. You were just talking about it at your last meeting. And they were gonna have an emergency access for fire and police. Why does it have to be emergency only? Make it, open it. Allow people to cross over Martha Lewis and come out that way.
We've been very concerned about the CSX crossing of Bully Rock. In fact, we've had some serious meetings with CSX.
Yeah.
And it's, because the only way you can get out is through that little golf course underpass, that you can't get a school bus through, you can't get a mail truck through.
Right. And I've heard you say that it's falling apart, and they need to fix it.
It is. It is.
Personally, I think they should fill it in and make it an accurate crossing, but-
We're, we're very much aware of what you're talking about, and we'll do our best to keep the pressure on.
I guess I'm using Wawa as an excuse to take an opportunity to just traffic. And please, stop approving neighborhoods up on the hill. We can't take anymore. We just, you know, I mean, you can design them and hope they're gonna go down 155, but they're not. They're not. Not if Wyse is their destination, not if Wawa's their destination, not if the high school is their destination. That's not the way they're gonna go. They're gonna come through our neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the commission? Yes, ma'am. Same thing, please come up and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Melissa Smith. I live at 301 Squaw Court in Grace Harbor. And I just wanted to say a couple of things. First thing is that I would love for a Wawa to be where the BP is now. You could not convince me to go into BP at this point, but I would gladly go into a Wawa every single day, instead of having to drive all the way up to Aberdeen to get to it. Also, as somebody who lives in Grace Harbor, I go to Wyse quite often, and I personally take 155 to go to Wyse. I don't come down any other way. But I do go up through Havertay Hills to go home, so I understand the concerns there. I do think that the mitigation efforts that they've talked about seem like they would be a great fix for a lot of things. And so I'm just really excited, and I hope that it all passes. That's all.
Thank you.
You guys.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Emily Usher. I live at 3663 Old Level Road, so kind of the, the back end of the Havertay-Grace zip code, but I do frequent Havertay-Grace in the town quite often, because I love it down here. And I would have to concur that I do not feel comfortable going into that BP as it stands now. And I think I would frequent a Wawa much more often, just because the comfortable feel. It, it provides a safe, welcoming environment for families and everyone to attend and, you know, buy their cost, buy their goods, you know, and then kind of go down to Havertay-Grace. So I really think it would be such an improvement for that area as well. I think it would bring a safer feel to the overall, like, Harbor Hills Shopping Center right there. So I definitely agree. And the traffic thing sounds great, but I don't want to keep going with that. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How would you, what path would you take to Wawa?
So I go down 155, and I would bear right under that bridge, and probably brave that light, just to make it, just keep making rights.
Okay.
Going through that neighborhood, I don't prefer it, because there's a lot of backroads from where I live, at 3663 Old Level Road. So kind of want to get there straight shot.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Just now, oh, yeah. The lady that spoke earlier.
First, I have a question for you. Would you mind coming up?
Yeah.
First of all, I want to let you know that everybody on this board here, we all know what you're going through. It's very frustrating, and we understand that. But the second thing I wanted to ask you is if, for whatever reason, the, the city, or the county, or somebody, the entity that could do this, was to close off Grace Harbor from that exit going down Havertay Hills and coming out, how would your community feel about that?
I'm not sure I'm following.
Having your community self-contained without an exit going down to Havertay Hills and out off to Lewis Lane.
You mean, cutting us off between the, the single family and the townhomes?
Yeah. Yes. How would you, as a community, feel? I just want to, I want to know that might from my own personal self, for the future.
It's hard, I can't speak for everyone. Personally, I wouldn't mind it. It would be a little getting used to, because I am used to going out that way. I mean, it's my neighborhood, that's where I live. But I would enjoy the peace and quiet. I would enjoy not having to listen to the traffic every single day go by. But I don't see it ever happening.
No.
I mean, I really don't, because as it's pointed out, and I totally get their point of view, it's not, it's not safe. The, the fire department needs access points to get to the hill. You got five of them in this town, and four of them on the east side of 40.
Right.
So I know it'll never happen. It's, it's a dream to think about.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much. I just want to know how you felt about that, because there's so few solutions to this, you, at this point.
Thank you.
While you're still here, Jen, I would, I'm thinking about what you're saying, but I also want to hear from other citizens as well. I just wanted to say that I, I hear your concern. And for me, when I heard you say, getting people coming from, off the 95 to keep them diverted other ways, coming in from Aberdeen, there's that Wawa there that, you know, comes off the, it's on the 40, but people come off the 95 to go there. And people aren't going to, that are travelers, aren't gonna want to come all the way in to go to our Wawa. I think they'd prefer to go to the Aberdeen one, if there needed a pit stop. I think that we're gonna deal more with our citizens in town that are going to want that access to a, a facility that's, gives higher quality service to the community. Not just a gas station, but more food opportunities. And yes, we do have two Royal Farms in our community. Having more options is nice. And, you know, the intersection's not gonna go away, and our traffic problems are, are here, because we are on, you know, the major route of the 40. And I know the building with new housing and everything, that, that, that is, you know, problematic. But, you know, we can hope for the future to have things changed in that way. So, you know, please consider that the choices that are being made are to help benefit us going further. And consider that, you know, we do absolutely want, you know, your community to be safe. And we also want the kids crossing and everything to be safe. So I think that the best measures with any change going forward is to, you know, make sure that everyone's on board to protect our community and our citizens. So, thank you for speaking up. I appreciate you coming out on behalf of your community, our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public would like to add anything? Okay. Fellow commissioners, are you, at this point in the game, or you feel like you're well enough informed about this project to move to a, to a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Now, because the motion is gonna be complex, with your permission, I would like to offer the language for the motion, and then have one of you, if you so choose, to move. Does that sound fair enough, so that we get it right? At the very end of what I'm gonna say, I'll ask Chip or one of you to add that last item.
Okay.
You prepared for that?
I am. I wrote something.
Good. I figured you'd do that. Okay. So the motion would be to approve the Wawa project based on the following conditions that are laid out in the staff report. Recommendations, which are, start on page two of the staff report. And that would be, that would include all seven general conditions. Department of Public Works' recommendations, eight and nine. Volunteer Fire and EMS recommendation, number 10. The Harford County Health Department' recommendations, one through six. Erosion and sediment control, stormwater management, recommendations, one through five. Roads and utilities, recommendations, six through eight. And an additional recommendation, if you would state it.
Okay. I would just add, well, first, before I make that recommendation, I, I was also going, until I heard the most recent discussion, I was also gonna recommend a condition regarding the pedestrian and bike crossing of Route 40. But I do understand the problems with that, and the fact that there's no sidewalk over there on Lewis Lane by the CVS. So it is creating a pathway to nowhere, which is a problem. And I would hope that would certainly be addressed in, in future state road planning, and as part of the, you know, the Route 40 bikeway pro, and, and, you know, any other projects that are nearby, so that we can improve that crossing. Because it does, does a little good to have a bikeway that comes to 40, and then you can't cross. But the progress we're making so far, it's incremental, but it's beneficial. But to get back to the facade, general condition, that would fall under general condition four. And right now, it says the facade of the building adjacent to Lewis Lane needs to meet the requirements of chapter 155, and should include entrance features. And I would just add-
Can, instead of trying to add to that, which would amend number four, to make it cleaner, could you just-
All right.
Add the recommendation at the end, and just refer, refer to the number four.
Okay. We could do that, too. We could make it a separate-
Because that way, we don't, we don't want to modify what I just read out.
All right. It could be a separate recommendation to include cafe tables and/or additional landscaping on the Lewis Lane-facing facade, from the eastern facade to the service store. And if you look at your site plan, there's an existing-
Now, wait a minute, that's the end of the recommendation?
Yeah, that's the end of the recommendation.
Okay, now, go ahead and-
But I'll explain-
Add your comment.
Yeah. There's an, if, from the bike lane, there is an existing crosswalk, painted crosswalk across the driveway that gets you to the front door entrance. So I'm suggesting from that sidewalk up to the service store, where you have 12 feet of concrete, that that could accommodate additional landscaping and/or cafe tables.
Thanks for those clarifications. Now, who would like to move?
Should I say?
You're, you're moving to everything that we-
Yes.
That I presented.
To, to approve of the conditions you pointed out.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the, on the motion and the second? All right. Hearing none. Let me find my, here we go. I'm gonna call the roll. Ed Girono.
Yes.
For Hot Shaw.
Yes.
Harry Miller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schnegus.
Yes.
Janice Chan.
Yes.
Chip Place.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the site plan is approved, pending all the conditions that we read out, that you're already familiar with, and the one extra one that you just heard. And thank you for your patience in front of us, and we wish you the best with your project going forward. This concludes this hearing. Now, we have a second piece of business, and we're not gonna take this too late, but I'd like to get it in. Back away all this stuff. And this is not a hearing. This is, in essence, a workshop. And the department has, has asked us to begin some, some active discussion on the, on the draft for the proposed NX Neighborhood Mixed Use District. It says on this document, districts plural, and I, I guess that's because it's, there, there are two separate versions of that district that are addressed, plus an overlay. And so I think that's why the, it's, it's pluralized. It's still all about the NX, and it's my understanding that the NX district overall that you're addressing in this proposal is the exact same boundaries as the current RO district. Is that correct?
That is correct. And the reason we, we did it that way, we were a little worried about, and we don't have to go into this too much tonight, if you zone a smaller area, it could be considered spot zoning. And it sort of worked out when we were doing our community work on this, and everybody was telling us, you know, we want to see Union Avenue return to the way that it was before. We want to see the connection of Lodge Lane returned. You know, there, there used to be smaller houses on Washington that connected both sides of the street, and I used to go to a little candy store that was like a family-owned house. You know, we, we heard a lot of these things. So for some legal issues, but also to address some of the comments from the public, we decided to, to review the entire district and, and just make wholesale changes.
Now, when you did this, you went to a consultant?
We have a consultant on board still, that's correct.
And that's the same consultant that was conducting those, those, those various charrettes and-
That, that's correct. It was that group.
Yeah.
BLTA Architects from, from Philadelphia, and they're subcontracting Code Studio, which focuses on writing form-based zoning code, and they're based out of Austin, Texas.
So the, the organization that, that prepared this form-based code vision, visioning report, the big one, was the consultant?
That's correct.
And they subcontracted to a code-writing organization to write this-
That's right.
A model code.
That's right. And we, we all were together. So the, the, there were members of both of these consultant groups that were parts of all the meetings.
Do they work together a lot on projects around?
Um, I'm not sure. I believe so. I believe they've worked on things in the past, but I'm not, I'm not sure to the extent. They did go, they were part of a procurement process, so there were two or three firms that were in, and they did all provide their, their resumes in similar projects that they had worked on. I'm not sure how many of those, off the top of my head, that they worked on together, but-
Yeah.
They've been involved before, I think.
I would like to- I would like to maybe get the ball rolling here, and this is not going to be the end of our discussion on this, this is just kind of opening remarks tonight, because we're not going to, we're not going to stay here till midnight.
And Volney, just before, before you go too far, I just want to just say one thing in advance of all this. They'll be doing an in-person presentation of this, and it's not going for a vote, we're still going through the process, but because of the, the budget year ending, in, the end of June, they're sort of, you know, they'll still be involved, but they're sort of wrapping up the, most of their stuff. So they'll be providing the, the required presentation to city council at the second city council meeting. And then, they also have a, a meeting with this group that'll happen after that city council meeting. So, I believe it's June 20th, my, they had, they wanted, they asked if they could do this one virtually, since the one with city councils in person. The plan would be, we would handle, if we have any business that month, we would handle that business, and then we could go over into the conference room and have a presentation or a workshop with them, and we can ask a lot of, a lot of items to them next month.
You mean, the commission and them?
Yes, yes. So I just wanted to let everybody know, you know, if there's something that, that I can't answer tonight, or, you know, as you're going forward in the next month, you're going to have a, an opportunity to hear them speak to city council, and then four days later, you'll have the opportunity to sit in a room and see all of them again on TV and ask any questions that you need to ask.
Well, I, I'll just open by saying that my, my take on this thing, I, two major takes on this, and number one is this document that I would say is their, it's really not their, their proposal for code, it's just their, their, their take on all the conditions that exist in Habit of Grace right now, and then at the very end, they make a few recommendations. But as I went through this thing carefully, I think today was my fourth time, I realized that, that what they are suggesting in this big document is just about every conceivable thing that could be put in that zone, particularly in that hospital area. There's, I mean, they've thought up every, everything that they can come up with, soup to nuts, instead of just narrowing it down to two or three specific proposals. And I'm going through all that stuff, and I'm saying, well, yeah, you could do all those things. And it, it almost involves every kind of use that exists in Habit of Grace in the other zones, with the exception of industrial and gas stations and things like that. In other words, it's got small stores, it's got retail, it's got restaurant, it's got hotel, it's got apartments, it's got condominiums, it's got single families, it's got duplexes, townhouses, it's just all in there, all rearranged in, in every conceivable way. And when I saw that, I said, what is that telling us?
Yeah, I-
And, and, and that bothered me a lot, when I saw that.
Yeah, I think, so, I, I don't disagree with you that all that's in there, I, I think the way that it should be read, and maybe, maybe I need to get back on them to make that, to make that clear. A lot of that is like the evolution of the process. So when you see the grocery store and everything in there, that, those were things that we were presenting at some of the community meetings. As you get to the end, there's a, a full color drawing of how Union would be reconnected, where there's townhouses proposed, the four areas where, where, where there could potentially be condos, as you go back off Strawberry Lane, they have, they have single families. So, the way, like I said, I, I don't disagree with you, but I, the way that it should be read, I think is sort of a chronology of the big idea and all the things that everybody said before they put pen to paper. And then, when we put pen to paper and we brought it out, and then it sort of got refined and whittled down. What also has been provided, there is an actual zoning code. I mean, there's zoning that, that was put out there, I think it was, somebody was saying they were having a problem, I think, trying to connect to it on their phone or, or something like that, I, I'm not exactly sure what was going on, so Eric had resent it today. But the end of that report feeds the, the draft zoning code and language that's out there.
So then I get to this thing, and this baby's 100 pages. And it is incredibly complicated, complex. And I just, I, so that I could speak to this thing succinctly, I just, I had to sit down and write what I'm getting ready to say, because I couldn't remember it all, cover it all. But I, I'm very disturbed by this thing, very disturbed, as, as a person that's served on this commission for a long, long time. Let's assume that this NX district ordinance is now in effect. And let's assume that I wish to purchase an existing small office building that's in fairly poor condition on Union Avenue, that would no longer be used for what it's being used for. I would like to buy the property, tear it down, and, and simply replace it with a single-family dwelling that's more in keeping with the original neighborhood, and I've got money to spend, you know, I want to put a nice home there. Before I make that investment decision and commit to the purchase itself, I'm confronted with this 100-page ordinance that would do the following: It would place severe restrictions on the architecture and textural appearance of my new home and its landscaping. It would force me into an architectural box on a streetscape that is about as varied and eclectic in scale, period, use, and utter mixture as any that can be found anywhere in small-town America. What I mean there is, this puts me into an architectural box, and nothing else on that street really fits that box. It's not in the box, it's, it's, everything goes on the rest of the street. It would force me to engage the services of an expensive consultant, just to figure out what I can and cannot do, and I would have to engage that consultant before I would, could even make a decision to buy the property. In other words, it takes due diligence to a whole new level, which would make a real estate transaction extremely difficult. It would force me to negotiate extensively with the planning commission and the plant, and the planning department, just to get a billing permit. Folks, this, this 100-page ordinance is, in my opinion, is outrageously complex and incredibly controlling. It will be a nightmare for the city professionals and our commission volunteers to comprehend it, much less to administer it in some rational way. It will be nearly impossible for our citizens to afford and for them to even find architects and builders willing to accept a project like this, with these kind of demands. In other words, an architect would have to school himself before he could even perform his duty to his client, because, again, of the complexity of this thing, and the myriad of, of options that you have to wade through and then refer back to, refer here, 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 and here, to make sure you're not going off the rails. If applied to the RO district, what would stop the same application to RB and beyond? In other words, if, 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 if form-based code is such a wonderful thing, what would stop us from next wanting to do that to the RB district, much less the residential's? And this is a perfect example, in my view, of government control just absolutely gone Form-based zoning code is a terrible idea for Habit of Grace right now, or in the future. We just want to go about our personal and business lives with the same freedom and prosperity and quality of life that we've always enjoyed here. We don't want people telling us exactly what we have to do to our property, and exactly how it has to look, and exactly what we can't do. This Habit of Grace is not, that's not this city, that's, that's not the people here. Reasonable amendments to the existing RO code, which I think now you could easily put into maybe three or four pages, with all the stuff that goes with it, and even if we took it out from that size document to maybe a 10-page document, particularly to sharpen what we want in the hospital area and what we don't want. Reasonable amendments to include a bit more latitude for the hospital property should be all that is necessary if we wish to invite creative investment. I speak as a lover of historic homes, a former builder and developer, and in 23 years as Chair of your planning commission, and that's my speech. Anyway, now I'll shut up and let somebody else say something.
So I read this, well, I tried to read this online, I didn't print the whole thing out like he did, but-
You're talking about the document, not what I just said?
The document.
Yeah.
And I, I was lost, almost entirely, through the entire thing, I kept, you know, when you read something, you have to reread it and reread it, and that's what I did, and finally I just gave up after about 20 pages. So, that's my take on it, I don't, I'm not on the planning, I'm not a planner, I'm not a builder, but as a person who's trying to understand what that was saying, you, I can't even give you a concept of what it's trying to say. That's just my take.
As a volunteer planning commissioner, I find the document to be very friendly with the visuals. It makes the complex wordage clear to me, but I'm a visual person, and I need that. For me, when I'm just reading this, I have to draw my own map, so that I can understand it, but providing this visual, yes, it's 100 pages, but it's intensified because of all the visuals, and it makes it very easy to the layman's eye. And I think that going with a concept of, you know, having something that's there visual for all people involved, all stakeholders, to see, I think that's a great concept. I think that we need time, but I also think that, you know, with the changing laws and everything going on, and with the sale of the, the hospital as a potential something that could come up, we do need to come, have laws formulated, and if we're going to change, we need to act accordingly. So, I think that we just need a little bit more time and not usher it through too fast, but with just, just right enough pacing, but to be open-minded, because we have a lot going forward, and yes, Habit of Grace is used to its style and its eclectic, you know, atmosphere. However, if we just allow that to continue, all the builders that are coming, coming in, they're going to do what they want, instead of, you know, kind of keeping that historic perspective, and so I think that the, a little formalities is okay, I think that that, you know, will help us stay a little standardized and, you know, not have to have as many issues with contractors and the planning commission. For instance, I will say the buildings on Commerce, is it Commerce and St. John, the intersection there, those two houses fit nicely into that community, and it, it wasn't, you know, too much of a struggle for the citizens in the area and for the planning commission, et cetera, to be able to accept that. So I think some standardization is good, and I'm not sure what our timeframe is on this, but I, I'd like to give us a little bit more time to, you know, look through it and understand it more.
Yeah, we're not, no hurry, there was no decision planned for tonight, I knew that this would take some time to, to work through, and I knew there'd be questions, and we had that presentation planned, so we're not trying to shove, you know, any kind of recommendation down, down any of your, your throats. But, you know, we wanted, because we knew it would take some time, we just want to get on the agenda, it'll move from new business to old business, and then we'll keep going back to it every time we meet, till we get to where we can go.
Can I ask that you print this, that whole thing out, because I can't print-
Yeah, I, I thought, I thought I had Eric do it before he left, and I'm, I don't know if I said anything to him or not, so I'll, I'll get copies of all, all of these for you to-
It might be a lot easier than online, because that was-
So it, it's made to be online, so actually, they haven't put in the links yet, but what, what happens is you'll, you'll kind of go to one section, and you'll see a table, and then you can, it'll say, you know, this is based on whatever, you can click on that, and then it'll take you to the pictures. So it, it'll be all linked eventually, so go back and forth, so, like, right now, when you're, you're looking at it, you know, you're, you're going through all the pages, but it's supposed to kind of be like a choose-your-own-adventure novel, if that makes sense, so you'll get to some point, and it'll say, like, go to this spot.
Yeah.
So, anyway, that, that is part of the, the confusion, and I'll tell you, I mean, I'm, I'm a planner also, we hired a consultant because the city doesn't have resources to do this, but when we discussed doing a form-based code, we knew it was going to be different and complicated and, and those sort of things. I'm not saying that it can't be simplified, and there's not some things that we can't work through, but, you know, it's, it's also been a change for me, and I'm a little more comfortable what you see in front of you, because I've been going through the entire process with the, with the consultants, but it's, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot, and it's, it's a culture change, and we'll, we'll, we'll keep going forward.
Harry, you want to speak?
Yeah, I got a couple comments, if I could.
Pull, pull, pull your mic down just a little.
Yeah, the first question is, is, I'm, I'm trying to understand, and I, and I was listening to what you said, you know, I think this is something that would be ripe for us to look at and vet before it goes to council or something, but apparently it goes to them first, they get it all in their head.
They're just getting a presentation before you, but you're, the reason you have it now is because you're going to make a recommendation before council votes on this.
Fair enough. The second thing, and I appreciate everything that you said, Volney, I really did, that was very thoughtful, but I want to talk about, like, precedents tonight and everything, okay? And apparently, these consultants are experts, so your 23-years' worth of experience, I mean, we can't go against the experts here, can we? I'm done.
A consultant is somebody that makes money. Just stop right there, I mean, that's, that's, they, they, they're in the game of-
I'll play, like, traffic consultants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they, they love to use the same approach in many communities.
Yeah, I, I think that characterization's unfair, I think it's honestly like a little insulting to the work and the time that we've put in, the amount of time that we've been in the community, the amount of time that me and my staff has spent on this project, to make it sound like they've come in and duped us and sort of planted something on us and took money out of the city, I just find that insulting and, and a little bit outrageous.
That was not my intent.
I, I get, I get, no, 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 I, I get, I get where you were going, but this comment that they kind of come in and plop what they do everywhere, as if we just haven't been involved in the process, I think that's just insulting to the amount of time that I personally have put in on this.
I was not in any way-
It's what you said, I don't know what you meant, but it's what you said.
I didn't consider you a consultant, I, I was talking about the consultants.
Right, but that, the thing would be that they had put this together almost like we weren't involved and have plopped this on us, and that hasn't been the case.
See, I think that the planning department works extremely hard, and I was sitting, sat and watched it.
And we worked extremely hard on this with them, so just that they took this from some other place and came in, I mean, I can tell you that that has not been my experience working with them every two weeks, having these discussions, having the two community meetings, everything that we put together. Ed's been involved, we have a, a separate group with the hospital group, we've met a number of times otherwise, and presented a lot of material to them, I just think that's a real, a really bad mischaracterization of this process. If you, if you don't like the, the way that it looks, and it's difficult and all those things, I completely understand it, but what other, your, your experience with other consultants, that has not been the, the situation with this.
My point was that a consultant's, if you, if you hire one consultant, they'll come up with one thing, if you hire another expert consultant, they will not come up with the exact same thing, that's my point. They are in the business of consulting, and that was, if I said that they make money, of course they do, they're, they're being paid to do that, okay? And it was not meant as a, as a, an insult, even to them, what I'm saying is-
Then I apologize then.
No two consultants are going to come up with anything close to the same product, and most places can't afford to hire two competing consultants. So they pretty much are stuck with what the one comes up with, all right?
I, I think you'll find in the report, though, the way that they got to the styles that were chosen was, and, and maybe Chip's a little bit more familiar with this, though I think he probably agrees with you, Volney, that it's difficult to go through. I mean, they went, you know, block by block, house by house, and looked at all the features, they looked where the setbacks were, they looked how high porches were, and the direction that we'd gotten from Steve, when he was part of this process, and the group that Ed's in, and, and speaking with the mayor, that we weren't to regulate materials, that we weren't supposed to go, you know, kind of what goes on with hardcore preservation, but that we were supposed to look at styles. And I think that really fit in- And I think that really fit in with what the community had to say about returning Washington back to the way it was, reconnecting Union to the way that it was. That in order to do that, although the houses look very different in material and those things, I think the features that are put in there that are part of the form-based code are things that you see that are very similar throughout all those streets. And if that's not reflected in the report when you go through it, I think that's something that I need to go back to the consultant with and make more clear.
See, I think, and I still want to hear from other commissioners. I think we all do. I think that the idea of restoring the streets is a wonderful idea. I think that's absolutely. And restoring the one-to-two-way street, Lewis Street, and putting the lane back where it connects straight through, that will restore the old character of Havant Grace. I also think that when the hospital is demolished and its parking lots are demolished, that there's going to be a huge amount of raw land there that probably would open itself to a form-based approach because you've got a clean slate. You've got a, you know, it's almost like undeveloped land, you know? It's just there. And we can make it look like anything we want it to look like. And, but for the rest of the RRO zone, to try to put that monkey around everybody else's neck would, I think, would be a huge mistake, a terrible mistake. That's where I'm coming from. Yeah, yeah. And so what I would suggest is, basically, if you want to call it an X or whatever you want to name the whole zone, but just let the hospital property be the overlay, the entire property, and everything else be the same. And you could even say, still call everything an RRO district with an NX overlay. Anyway, anybody else?
Sure, I'll offer some comments. I've shared most of them with Tim already. The report, I thought, was, I understand, it was, you know, it was capturing the history of this process. So it was as much a process document as anything else. And it got to a point with illustrative drawings that were actually appealing. But it wasn't really specific in terms of the mix of uses that would be in there. And more importantly, aside from form, there was no rational basis for determining the mix. It was, you know, it's townhouses, it's apartments. But where does that mix come from? Where do the numbers come from? You know, where from the comprehensive plan, for instance, which cites that 40% of renters, you know, renters in Havant Grace are rent-burdened. This cites a perfect opportunity to address that. So where does this mix come from? It's just kind of drawn, and you don't know where it comes from. And, you know, some people had even said, "Well, we would just want single-family housing," which is, you know, not reasonable either. So there has to be, you know, an explanation for how you get to these programmatic conclusions. And then I shared everybody, by the time I saw the code part of it, it was very confusing. And given that it's such a limited area, I would have expected that you go from the illustrative plans to some very specific drawings that show, "Well, here's a setback along Union, and here's what you need to maintain. Here's the height." And instead, it goes into very prescriptive language that's just, I need a hard copy too, just so I have to, I would have to flip back and forth multiple times just to figure out what's going on. So I think it went from something that was going somewhere, even though I don't understand the basis of the program in terms of identifying a form, to something that was way probably more complicated than it needed to be, especially since you're working in such a limited area. And I think the hospital site is the key site, you know? And people could call it spot zoning, but it's definitely, it's its own entity there. And that's where you really want to apply a very clear program and form to that site.
Well, my thought was that as you, if you look back on how the city formed in the first place, well, there wasn't any zoning until 19, what, '84, '82? And look what was created, okay? It was created basically by the, I call it the marketplace. The, you know, the demands that the people or the community or the whatever put on those spaces. And it didn't turn out so bad, you know? I think that, well, in my overview of it, I was just overwhelmed. I couldn't really comprehend it. It's going to take a couple more times of going over it. I think the discussions certainly helps everyone understand what we're trying to accomplish here. But I have great faith in the marketplace in that, you know, I can point to myself. And I just came into the town, actually, this month, nine years ago, and bought a property. And, you know, I saw people walking around. You know, they were looking and wondering what I was going to do. And it didn't turn out so bad. I mean, once it was done, everybody seemed to be happy. And I just think that that's how it typically works. I think that humanity, if anybody came in there and dealt with that property, whether they're real pressures or not, there's a certain conformity that takes place. And I don't know. I have great faith in the marketplace and how it will deal with these things. Sure, you know, we can't have wah-wahs down there where in the RRO zone. But at the same time, I think we need to let the marketplace help out here and make some, help make some decisions as well.
Yeah, just two quick things on that. We have provided this to the contract developer per their request. They're with their architect group to see what they can do and if this makes sense to them on the market. But I would say the reason that we hired a consultant and we went through the zoning change process is because what was provided to us originally that the market wants is not what the city wanted at all. I mean, it would have been basically another building, the same size and massing of the hospital, replacing that, the hospital with all multifamily. They wanted to reduce parking to, you know, some 1.3 per unit, where it's now, you know, three per unit. And we have complaints about parking problems. And the rest of the site that you see now that is parking lot was all going to be townhouses. And that was going to all be market rate rentals. And so when we had seen that original massing plan and we thought, you know, is this allowed under zoning? Is it not? I'm not sure. It's kind of close. There's probably a lot of this that they could do. That's why the city decided to move forward with the zoning change.
I kind of agree with you on that one, Tim, because I feel like if you leave it to the market, the market's going to do what brings the most money. And that's not necessarily what the community wants. They want cohesiveness in the style, not necessarily all the same cookie-cutter style, but cohesiveness such as porches and setbacks and things like that. And I think if you don't have those kind of things written down, the market's going to put an art deco building in the middle of a Victorian community. And you just can't do that kind of thing.
Yeah. As we've been through this process with the hospital folks and then, you know, their contract developer kind of deciding still whether or not they wanted to be involved in the process, I haven't gotten the, hey, this is great. Yeah, this is the best, you know, thing that we've seen so far. But they've continued to work through the process. I mean, they had every right to protest and say, "This is not going to work. We're not going to be able to sell this property. You're going to have a hospital stuck there. We're not going to be able to get the funds for demolition." That has not been the case. It's sort of been the opposite, that they thought, again, not exactly what we've given, but that form-based code made sense for this area. It was something that they had worked through in other places.
This is the consultant?
The consult, no, this is the hospital.
The hospital itself, yeah.
This is the hospital itself, yeah.
I just want to...
And I'm not saying that he's going to come back and be like, "I just paid my architect a whole hell of a lot of money to go through this document, and it was the most complicated form-based code they've ever had to go through." I mean, that could be a response, don't get me wrong. And a lot of the other things that everybody said here is valid. But it's not, it's not been so harmful that they were like, "Hey, you guys got to stop this. We're not going to be able to sell this to anybody to develop."
Personally, I don't have any problem at all with a form-based code that's written a little easier to understand for the hospital property. I think that's, and it's a big enough property that we can call it an overlay and not a spot zone, you know, because it's a huge amount of property. But I think that this document would be a disaster throughout the rest of RRO. And it would just totally, I mean, that building that I just renovated right backed up to, you know, where the doctor's office became MPI. If I had to follow this, that probably, they never would have bought that property under this. They never would have done anything with it. It's just, it was too complicated. And I couldn't have done what we did architecturally with that building under this. And that's, we're going to have a lot of those kind of properties that are going to come up over the years in little onesies and twosies. It's not going to be like one big thing like the hospital property. And so I'm all for a very special treatment for the hospital property to ensure that we get something that's compatible with that neighborhood.
I think that's a fair critique. I think that's something I'll, I mean, it's definitely something I'll mention to the consultants, and I think it's something that we should all be prepared to discuss in June with them.
And legally, I think, and you've probably bear me out on this, about the only way that you can ensure that is through some sort of a form-based code. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think, I think...
The way you dictate the architecture.
Right, I think you could do a lot that way. And that's kind of what I was looking for. I was actually looking for them to draw the picture of what this is going to be. And not so much in prescriptive language, but actually draw what we want to see.
Did you want to say anything? You didn't get a chance to chime in. You cool?
Yeah, I'm listening. I'm just going to go read it when I don't have anything better to do.
If you want to put yourself to sleep tonight, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah. No, I'm sleepy already.
Do we know how that legislation ended up?
So the state legislation, it passed. It looked like that it wasn't going to. It passed. We haven't fully went through it yet. The changes that we noticed, there haven't been any changes to the main part of the bill which says that any affordable housing project on state property or something owned by a nonprofit, if that project becomes no longer viable, which isn't defined, due to some restrictions or something under city code, that city code no longer applies. So that still exists in full form. Looks like the concessions they made were to allow funding to be available for projects that had a 25% affordable housing set aside instead of 50. Instead of only allowing one hearing for planning commission and some other groups, they now allow two. They're very generous. And adequate public facilities can be a reason to deny the project. So adequate public facilities has to be met. So there were some concessions, but at the end of the day, you know, I mean, what would happen realistically is somebody would come in with a project and the city, the planning commission, it would be shaped in some way that whoever would be doing that project would be like, "This is no longer viable for me." We don't know what that means, no longer viable financially for them. It's not in the model that they want to do. You know, it's hard to say what that means. But when it becomes no longer viable, I suppose the state would send some directive saying that we're in violation of law and that our law doesn't apply, and then we would go to court.
Well, that just says the two things. One, there's a need to be proactive. And secondly, not to be overly prescriptive about it, to just get right to the point.
Yeah, I can appreciate that. I can say the group that has continued to be on board with the hospital on this, they do rentals. They do do market rate. There is a similar project from a hospital space that they were doing in Lancaster, Pennsylvania. Lancaster has a specific affordable housing set aside up there. And they said that is not something that they build. So they carved out a piece of the property and then provided that to a developer that does affordable housing. So that has been sort of one thing that has been good through this process and staying on board with the hospital and the developer, at least to this point, is that they have a product that they build, and it's not the product that we were worried about in the state bill.
And then if you remember the Walmart